Okay. Hi, everybody. I greeted some of you before, but I'm Enid Wechslerbaum from the League of Women Voters Rochester. I'd like to welcome you all here tonight to the, to this forum, which is sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester and partnered with us are the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. We sometimes take study and take stands on issues, but we never endorse a candidate or a political party. The views that you'll hear tonight are those of the candidates, not those of any of the partners or the League of Women Voters. The questions that we have tonight are going to come from the League and our partners, the Post Bulletin, the Chamber of Commerce, and then the audience, including the online audience, which have been sent in tonight. If you weren't here earlier in the evening, you may find that you can have a card. There are a lot of cards floating around. If you write down your question, hold up your card, one of our volunteers will fetch it and bring it to our question desk. There is a question card right there available. And the questions will be reviewed then. Questions that are hostile or unclear or of a personal nature will not be used given our format. Your questions must relate to both candidates. Questions that fall in the same general area, which have been addressed in opening statements or in the answer of a previous question, may be consolidated to allow us to cover as many topics as possible. We like questions that are forward-thinking and not a review of past issues. If an answer was unclear, we probably won't have time to respond to that here and now tonight, but you can grab the candidate after our event and/or contact them on their website. We'd like to thank all of our candidates for running for office, for offering, everybody say that a few times, to serve your community. We know that the time it takes, the energy it takes to run and serve is very demanding. We appreciate your doing that. We encourage each of you in our audience and our online audience to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. Our volunteers from the League of Women Voters tonight, our timekeepers are Jan Strand and Eric Foldall. The question reviewers are Amy Lynn Connors and Rachel LaForge. Our volunteer, our partner from the Post Bulletin is Jordan Sheer. Our candidates for tonight's forum, this is for the Rochester School Board, seat number five. Our candidates are Jean Marvin and Kimberly Rashavi. By order in which they drew numbers out of the cup, candidate Marvin will go first. The candidates have, let me review the rules. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer opening statement. The candidates will then respond in turn to questions provided by the League of Women Voters, this evening's partners, and the audience. Candidates will have 75 seconds each to answer each question. The candidates will then have two minutes to make a closing statement. I'd like to suggest to the candidates that you make your answers as succinct as possible. Then we can cover as many topics as possible. Each candidate will also have three green 30-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card may be used per question. Please put the card in the basket after you've used it. I would like to remind the audience to remain quiet during the forum, hold your applause until the end of the forum, and turn off all of your electronic devices. And as I said, by drawing numbers, candidate Marvin will go first with her opening statement.
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters, the Public Library, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Post Bulletin for sponsoring this event. It's important for us to be able to share our perspectives about what public education should be in this school district. It's clear that the two of us running for seat five have different perspectives about what public education is, what it should be, and who it should be for. I've spent my entire adult life in and dedicated to education. As a Rochester Public School teacher, a parent, and a grandparent of RPS students, a university education professor, and a school board member for the last eight years, I've had the privilege of getting firsthand experience in both the art and the science of teaching and learning, witnessing a thousand ways education and educators have helped children become successful. There is no question Rochester is faced with some very real challenges. Virtually every school district in the nation is too. But especially now, it's not enough to just call out problems and attack schools. We need to solve problems. And the most important thing about problem-solving for this school district or any school district is that the information has to be based on fact, and there has to be an underlying plan based on fact, not informed by narratives circulated on social media or anecdotes about what's going on elsewhere, but by facts that are true for our schools and how the current administration and school board are addressing them. The fact is, this administration has in place an intelligent, comprehensive, research-based, community-supported plan to move our district forward. We know what we need to do, we have systems and steps in place, and I'm ready to continue doing the work to get that plan done.
Thank you. Candidate Rashavi.
Good evening, and thank you to everyone who's here and watching it later online. I'm running for seat five on the school board. And a little bit about myself, born and raised here in Rochester, went through the public schools my whole life. My husband of 37 years did the same, as did our two adult children. We all graduated from John Marshall High School, Go Rockets. And now that I have my grandchildren, there's nothing familiar whatsoever about the schools in my mind and those of teachers we've talked to, parents and other students we've talked to. You have to look at what is different. The question is why? Why are the academic scores so low and the violence increasing? Question is, or the answer to that question is, my opponent and the current school board members are putting equity ahead of academics, discipline, and the problem with the inappropriate books in the library and social agendas allowed in the classroom. And when I say equity, I am saying everyone. Equity is, or should be, equality. I'm not taking a certain group when I say equality, but the problem is equity is taking a certain group, and they're splitting groups against each other. And the other thing is, and how do we know that the academics are failing? It's not my opinion, it's according to the Minnesota Department of Education. And how do I know that violence is increasing? It's according, it's according to the Post Bulletin has reported that. And these statistics on education, this is before COVID. We can blame COVID. The problem with COVID is their lockdown system made it even worse, and the academics just continue to fall, and the violence continues to increase.
Thank you. We'll go on to the questions portion of tonight. Our first question comes from the League of Women Voters, and I'm going to begin with candidate Rashavi. We have a continued problem with students not reading at grade level, as measured by standardized testing by the end of third grade, now more than ever. What do you believe the district should do for these students?
Well, first of all, we need to get academics back into the classroom. We need to make room for that instead of being so worried about social agendas and pushing that on our children. And that's not my opinion. Again, this is according to the Minnesota Department of Education. The academics are not being taught. My opponent has been on the school board for over eight years. The academics continue to decline each and every year that she's been there. The Minnesota Department of Education is saying math and reading scores fell from 63.9% in 2013, that's not anywhere near COVID, down to 39.5% in 2022. Reading fell from 58% down to 49.4%. Also, according to the Minnesota Department of Education, it says that graduate, this is interesting, the graduation rates are rising despite the decline in college readiness, and that's according to the ACT research. Come to your own conclusion on that. The Post Bulletin recently reported that the MCA scores have dropped 13.7% in math and 10.2 in reading. That's just facts.
Thank you. And candidate Marvin.
Thank you. MCA scores have dropped, there's no question. That's one standardized test, that's the one used by the Department of Education. Kids were out of school for a couple of years, and one thing that they discovered is that they don't have to take that test. They can opt out of it. And we have a whole lot of kids in Rochester who are choosing not to take the MCA, some of our top students. So there's, the scores that they might get wouldn't count. Now, there are a lot of other concerns we have about academics. We are addressing those concerns. We are starting now to provide for kids in kindergarten through eighth grade, a local test called FastBridge. It's a 15-minute screening. The results come to teachers right now, so they can see per student how each student is doing throughout the year. That information is really going to help. MCA tests are taken once, and teachers get the scores back the next summer after their students are gone. We are absolutely laser-focused on academics, and our strategic plan, that is the number one priority. We have all kinds of steps in place to address that.
Thank you. I have a rebuttal.
The strategic plan, there's not one thing in the strategic plan that talks about academics, not one. Go read it, go to fouryearchildren.org. There is nothing in the strategic plan, I say again, that helps academics. It's all the same that's continued with the social-emotional learning, the belonging, and all of that. It doesn't work. They've done it in the past. The academics are going down, so their solution is to do a strategic plan. There's nothing strategic about it.
Thank you. And we have a rebuttal.
The number one piece of the strategic plan is about teaching and learning. Read it, it's available online. The superintendent just came out with a report on the top 12 initiatives that are going to be rolled out. Number one, academic achievement, including reviewing and revising the curriculum. Everything in the strategic plan, including ensuring that kids feel safe and welcomed, is based on helping them improve their academics.
Thank you. Our next question comes from the Rochester Post Bulletin. And we'll begin with candidate Marvin.
The school board incumbents on the block of challengers have expressed starkly different views on many subjects and have very different views about what the future for the school district should be. What do you believe is at stake at this election for the Rochester School Board?
The future of our kids. I think we're at a point where we need to decide if we are going to welcome everybody's kids, or if we are going to start judging who's acceptable and who is not. The future of their education, of their potential success, of how we educate them, how we ensure that they feel the respect that they need, the belonging that they need, so that they will get engaged with their own education. Kids need to feel that they belong to something, because if they don't feel that they belong to something positive, like a school district, that they believe they don't have a future, they are going to create trouble. They're not going to leave this community up, but they're going to create trouble, and they're not going to be able to have a successful future. I don't understand this narrative about social engineering and critical race theory that some people seem to think is at the foundation of what we're doing here. It simply isn't true, but enough people have started repeating it that I guess for some it's become true.
Thank you. Candidate Rashavi.
The problem with what I am saying in the block of four is there's an equity statement. Read the equity statement. That will be very clear that there is a difference between how different students are treated. Different groups are put against different groups. There's nothing positive about that. We are supposed to be teaching academics not a sense of belonging. That belongs in home. You come to school, you learn, you teach, and you leave your social agendas outside of the schoolroom. I wouldn't come into school with my personal agenda and try and tell you how to think and what I want you to do, nor do I want someone telling my child that they need to do a certain way, and if you don't think this way. I want to talk about academics. The scores show they are failing. They've failed in the past, they're still failing, and the incident of, the incident of violence is going up. That is just a fact. So this equity thing you're doing isn't working. We need equality. Equality, that's everybody.
Thank you. Our next question, okay, yes.
You know, Kim, on Post Bulletin on July 16th, you said, and I think this was a wonderful thing to say, I think everyone can agree that the basic need and right of a child is to feel safe. That's in our schools. You'd also said when talking about, there was an article about, it had been said that you were coddling kids, you said you absolutely believe in special education, in gifted education, that the needs of kids who have needs should be met. That's what equity is, making sure that every child receives what they need. That's equity.
You may.
I'm not talking about just special education, I'm talking about everyone. Of course, everyone, if you have a special need, that's quite different than just because your skin color's different. Skin color doesn't change, meaning that you need a special treatment for that. Yes, if you have a special need, then great, then you need a classroom for that. But the color of your skin, I don't care what color your skin is. I want equality for each and every child. I will never make a vote that makes a child feel that something that, according to their skin color, makes them less of a person. That is unfair, and that is wrong.
Thank you. Our next question actually was sent in by the Chamber of Commerce, and reads, and we will begin with candidate Rashavi. How would you work to engage with local businesses and organizations to grow opportunities for students' career exploration? What role do you believe the school district should play in workforce development?
Well, I think workforce development would be awesome. That's another part with academics. You need to, you need to have academics to become whatever it is in this world that you want to become. Everybody has every equal opportunity to become to the highest possible achieving level that you can. The school can help with that. We can have businesses come into the schools. You can have kids go into different businesses and do whatever it is you're interested in, shadow other people, find out what you're interested in. Let's get these kids achieving to their top level that they deserve.
Thank you. Candidate Marvin.
Yep, and that's part of what our schools are all about beyond reading, writing, and arithmetic. We want to make sure that kids are ready to leave school, ready for the workforce, or ready for higher education, or both. We need them to know how to think critically, that is, to consider more than one perspective, and to come up with an intelligent decision. We need them to get the soft skills, some people call them social-emotional skills, so that they know how to interact with other people, how to listen, how to ask good questions, how to get along in a group. And we are, our CTEC program, our PTEC program, give kids opportunities to explore the world of work while they're still in school. And I think we need to continue reaching out to our business community and have our kids doing apprenticeships, mentorships, so that they understand that in the world of work, you need to know stuff, you need to be able to get along with people, you need to be able to listen and cooperate and be a good team player. All of those things are important to be a successful individual.
Thank you. Our next question is going to come from the audience, and we're going to begin with candidate Marvin. How does the school board, how does a school board member fulfill their responsibility to be a good steward of public funds while also balancing the needs of the students that often remain unfulfilled because of limited funds?
Well, and again, it was discussed in the forum before this, the finances of any school district is a critically important thing. So we need to ensure, well, first of all, and as candidate Nathan said, school districts across Minnesota have been dramatically underfunded since the beginning of about 201, 200 and three. We're not getting the funds that we were promised. So we need to do the research, we need to reach out to the community and ask them what's important to them. We have to make really difficult decisions about what cuts are going to be made, how much balance we keep in our, in our general fund balance, so that we'll have some reserve in case there is an emergency that comes up. Being a school board member is a wonderful, a wonderful job, but it's a lot of responsibility. And you have to do a lot of reading, listen to a lot of people, and get a whole lot of information to be able to make those kind of decisions.
Thank you. Candidate Rashavi.
I still haven't been able to wrap my head around the $23 million in debt. 24 hours later, it's zero. 10 days later, we're at a $10 million surplus. So I am going to need to do a lot of reading to figure out how that works. The other thing is we have a more per pupil given to us than our surrounding communities, yet we have the least amount to show for it. That's according to the MCAs. Byron, Chatfield, Plainview, surrounding schools, they do much better in academics, and they're giving, giving them a lot less per pupil. So what are we doing with the money? I will be doing a lot of reading. I, I will tell you, I don't understand it.
And you could start by reading the January 11th, 2022 minutes to our school board meeting, or just watch it. At that meeting, the board was presented with four different options of meeting our deficit, including a very clear explanation about what the costs were that we had not been able to anticipate, including contracts that had settled for more than we had planned, and a very clear plan about how we are going to handle that deficit. There is a three-year plan. We've accomplished the first year and reduced that deficit to zero. We have two more years with two, two more steps in the plan available, January 11th, it's right there, and our entire budget book for the board is posted on our website. There's a tab that says transparency. It's 146 pages, I think, long, line by line, what every penny has been, been spent on, where our revenue comes from, and where our expenditures go.
And we have a rebuttal.
I'll look into that. But I would like to get back to, we are given more per pupil than our surrounding communities and have less to show for it with the academic results. That is a fact. Our surrounding schools get much, much less per pupil, Byron, Chatfield, Plainview, and the others, and their academic achievement level is much higher than ours. You figure that out.
Thank you. I'll remind candidates that you have each used your three rebuttal choices. Our next question will be going, offered first to candidate Marvin. What is the role of teaching history, American history, and world history to our students and for our democracy?
You know, if we-
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt. I need the audience to be silent during this period.
If we don't understand our history, if we don't have a good grasp on who we were as a nation, who we are as a nation, and the steps we've taken to ensure that this democracy that all of us, I think, embrace, how it is continuing to develop, we're not going to have much of a future. A fact-based study of history is critically important. The things we've done well, the missteps we've taken, our leaders, the great ideas, we have to be awake to what has happened so that we can continue to be awake to what could happen. We don't get better unless we know where we've come from. And, and we've been doing that for a long time. People are saying, well, you're, you're teaching kids to hate their country. Where is that coming from? We're using the same textbooks we've been using for the last 10 years. The history that in those books, in those books, hasn't changed for the last 10 years. There's this narrative that I soundly reject, and I wish you would listen to the students in this district, because they reject that narrative as well.
Thank you. Candidate Rashavi.
Well, history is history. You can't change it because it already happened, so we need to understand. We, we know where we came from, we know the differences, we know the challenges, we know things that happened that were good, things that happened that were bad, and so let's leave it at that, and let's go forward. What is the point in going backwards thinking it all might happen again? Everybody knows what happened. Why start separating people and correlating them with a certain event- It's 146 pages, I think, long, line by line, what every penny has been spent on, where our revenue comes from, and where our expenditures go.
And we have a rebuttal.
I'll look into that. But I would like to get back to, we are given more per pupil than our surrounding communities and have less to show for it with the academic results. That is a fact. Our surrounding schools get much, much less per pupil. Byron, Chatfield, Plainview, and the others, and their academic achievement level is much higher than ours. You figure that out.
Thank you. I'll remind candidates that you have each used your three rebuttal choices. Our next question will be offered first to candidate Marvin. What is the role of teaching history, American history and world history, to our students and for our democracy?
You know, if we-
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt. I need the audience to be silent during this period.
If we don't understand our history, if we don't have a good grasp on who we were as a nation, who we are as a nation, and the steps we've taken to ensure that this democracy that all of us, I think, embrace, how it is continuing to develop, we're not going to have much of a future. A fact-based study of history is critically important. The things we've done well, the missteps we've taken, our leaders, the great ideas, we have to be awake to what has happened so that we can continue to be awake to what could happen. We don't get better unless we know where we've come from. And we've been doing that for a long time. People are saying, "Well, you're teaching kids to hate their country." Where is that coming from? We're using the same textbooks we've been using for the last 10 years. The history in those books, in those books, hasn't changed for the last 10 years. There's this narrative that I soundly reject, and I wish you would listen to the students in this district, because they reject that narrative as well.
Thank you. Candidate Rashavi.
Well, history is history. You can't change it because it already happened. So we need to understand. We know where we came from, we know the differences, we know the challenges, we know things that happened that were good, things that happened that were bad, and so let's leave it at that, and let's go forward. What is the point in going backwards thinking it all might happen again? Everybody knows what happened. Why start separating people and correlating them with a certain event in history that probably wasn't that great? That's where we come from, that's who we are as a people. We need to teach civics, we need to teach history, and we'll continue to grow and learn.
Thank you. Our next question from the audience, and we're going to begin with candidate Marvin. Broken window theory is the concept that each problem that goes unattended in a given environment affects people's attitude toward that environment and leads to more problems. What do you think of broken windows theory as it pertains to our schools?
That's a really good question. I'm not sure I quite understand it. And I have to-
Do you agree on something?
Oh. That if you don't address a problem, it becomes more of a problem?
If you don't address a problem, it leads to other problems in the area.
Well, I guess that makes sense. The thing is, you have to understand what caused the problem, not just that it exists, but what caused it, before you can come up with any kind of a solution. And I suppose if you're thinking about something like a hole in your roof, some problems you really have to address before they get worse, I guess.
I'm just going to agree with you. I love it.
Our next audience question, we're going to begin with candidate Rashavi. Do you believe that meals should be provided to all Rochester Public School students? Why or why not?
Absolutely.
Free, by the way.
Absolutely. If you are in need and you can afford it, and with the rising price of groceries and everything else, I understand that completely. Why would we want any children to go hungry? That, to me, is just common sense.
Thank you. Candidate Marvin.
What Kim just said.
Oh, good grief.
If kids are hungry, we're doing lunch later. And it's too bad, you know, last year, we were able to give every kid free breakfast and free lunch. That way, there was absolutely no shame. If a child couldn't afford lunch, you didn't have to worry about it. I wish we could keep doing that as a nation. I wish we could keep doing that.
Thank you. Our next audience question will begin with candidate Marvin. I'd like to know how you both intend to improve the ability to use logic and reasoning or critical thinking to learn and understand for our students.
Well, and that's a huge part of what we're doing. You know, part of the academics is, you don't teach critical thinking as a separate subject. You teach that in connection with history, with English, with science. It's problem-solving, it's looking at different perspectives, it's being able to hear someone's opinion, and not necessarily agree with it or accept it, but be able to understand that people look at issues from different directions, they have different opinions. I guess I'll stop at that.
Okay. Candidate Rashavi.
Okay. Well, I love critical thinking, because everybody is so unique, and you look at everything from a different point of view. And the definition of critical thinking is the analysis of available facts, evidence, and observations, and arguments to form a judgment. And that is what should be playing out in our schoolrooms today. Just getting caught up in all this social agenda thing is just mucking the waters up. Let's stay focused on the critical thinking. The kids are going to come out so much better.
Thank you. Our next audience question is regarding school board communication. We will begin with candidate Rashavi. How could our Rochester Public Schools improve communications with parents and the community?
I think that's a big issue. I think we have seen many parents very, very frustrated at school board meetings, and that really came to light during COVID. Parents, I mean, we've heard from so many felt so unheard. I mean, that's their children, their pride and joy, and they just felt unheard. Transparency is huge. It needs to, I mean, I would love to just sit down with parents and not have like three minutes to talk. I would want to hear what they want. As far as the curriculum, it has to be transparent. They're out of their control, and they're giving the control to someone else. You have your values at home, and you're going to hope that when you send them to school, that's not going to be turned upside down. So transparency, and with the budget. We're all taxpayers, even if you don't have a child in school, you're a taxpayer, and that needs to be out in the open.
Thank you. Candidate Marvin.
Couldn't agree more that we have to be absolutely transparent, and that's why all school board meetings are recorded and livestreamed. That's why every document that we get, you get. They're available online, they're available on the website. Recently, we started doing a summary of school board meetings, just a three-minute summary And the thing is, we listen to parents all the time. I probably spend three hours a day, happy to do it, answering emails, answering phone calls. People have questions, they have concerns, they want to share ideas. We love that. School board meetings are business meetings. That's not a great time to have a discussion, but it's one of the reasons that anybody who comes to speak, and again, it's only three minutes, we say, "Can we give you a call back?" And generally speaking, they say, "Yeah," and then we can have a discussion, 15 minutes, half an hour, and any parent can call any school board member anytime, absolutely.
Thank you. Our next question, we're going to begin with candidate Marvin. Do you support the right of teachers and staff members to display affinity signs such as pride or ally signs?
We have a policy that allows our teachers, or our students for that matter, to put up gay pride banners and certain other statements in their classrooms. We do not allow everything. We would not encourage, we wouldn't allow, a teacher to display a swastika, for instance, in the classroom. But we have children in this district who have been bullied, who have been harassed, and who are feeling threatened. Their friends in their schools have said they want to show their support for these kids. And if putting up a sign on a wall or in a hallway can make those kids feel more welcome, to me, it speaks to the quality of the students in that building, that they have the kind of empathy, they have the kind of compassion for their classmates, and they want to say, "You belong here. We value you. We respect you. We may have differences, but you belong here, and we want you to feel welcome and safe." I think that speaks well for the entire school when we see that kind of symbol.
Thank you. Candidate Rashavi.
As far as I know, going to school just includes academics. Kids don't have to agree with the LGBT, they don't have to agree with the pride, they don't have to agree to any of that, any more than someone doesn't have to agree if they want to carry their Bible in. We don't do that in the schoolroom. There's no place for that in the schoolroom. That's absolutely ridiculous. That is catering to one side so much. And other kids, even if they didn't agree with that, they would, they'd never speak up, because you would be labeled a racist, a bigot, a homophobic, or whatever you want to call it. That's the social stuff I'm talking about right there. And I can guarantee you, see, I'm getting very worked up, because that is absolutely wrong. You can't do that in our schools. That belongs outside of our school district. Join a club, go wherever you want to, that is not supposed to be in our schools.
Thank you. Our next question from the audience will begin with candidate Marvin. How do you deal with the violence and disrespect that is occurring in our PS?
I just wanted to say one more thing. When we are showing compassion and respect-
You didn't get a rebuttal. That's not fair.
No, it's my, I think it's my time.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the previous subject.
Yeah. When we are showing respect, and when students say they want to show respect and support for other kids in their school, who is that hurting? By being kind and generous and compassionate to students? What other students is that hurting? How does it take anything away from their experience in school? And then the question you just asked was-
Violence and disrespect.
Violence and disrespect. You know, kids have been getting a lot of the language, hearing a lot of the language from adults, the kind of violent, disrespectful language. Absolutely, we have kids coming into our schools. The violence has dramatically decreased this year, dramatically decreased. You talk to any school member or school teacher anywhere, and they'll say, "It's better this year." We still have kids who are angry about things, we still have kids who have mental health issues. It's getting better, we have a plan for that, the schools are laser-focused. But the thing is, I'm afraid sometimes kids are listening to their parents and other adults who are being rude and disrespectful, and they think, "They can do it, why can't I?" They don't learn that at school. Kids spend 15% of their time at school, the other 85% of their time, they're with their family.
Thank you. And candidate Rashavi.
Where do I start? How is that not affecting kids in school when people are running around with their pride flags and that? Maybe I don't agree with it. Maybe I don't, I don't do that at my house, and I find it offensive. Maybe I'm going to bring my Bible in and start reading about Jesus Christ. Is that going to be okay? Absolutely not. You cannot do that in school. That's absolutely insane that you think that one group of kids can take over a classroom. And as far as the violence, kids, there are no consequences. Of course, they're learning it at school. Kids run around, it's in the post bulletin, they can swear, they can do whatever they want to disrupt classrooms, they're not taking out of the classroom, the teacher can't teach, nothing is done. Even with this new cell phone thing, it's five strikes and you're out? Who's policing that? Well, that's the teacher. What are you going to do? Give me your cell phone. The kid doesn't listen in the first place, but he's going to hand over his cell phone? I mean, it's total chaos, as one parent has put, and another has said, "I moved you from a different state." What is going on? There is no discipline.
Thank you. Since the library closed at 8:00, we're going to come to the closing statement portion of our evening, and by luck of the draw, candidate Rashavi will go first.
So we have severe differences between us. I'm about every child getting the equal opportunity. I don't care what your color is, I don't care your gender, I don't care about any of that. I want you to come to school, I want you to learn the basics of education, to better you, to go out in the world and be a productive human being. I don't want there to be the teacher having to become the social worker and trying to understand your emotions, and everybody else in the classroom doesn't even have time to learn what's going on. My opponent and the current school board do not, they think they do, but they do not represent the majority of the parents in this community, and they're going to find that out November 8th, along with my fellow student block of candidates, Ray Parker, Elena Nihoff, and John Whelan. We are a voice for these kids. We're going to get things back on track. The number-one issue for parents is academics and smaller class sizes. Not happening, not happening. It's not COVID that did it. It was way before COVID. COVID made it worse. This super strategic plan thing, there was only 285 community members that responded to that, and only 59% of the districts even cared what it said. It doesn't accomplish anything. They've already done all that. It's just a bunch of word salad that's creating the same output. And as far as the violence, there's nothing being done about the violence. You get your cell phone maybe taken away after five times. It's absolutely ridiculous is what is going on. I know it, you know it, the community knows it, and we're going to find out on November 8th. We're going to make a difference, and we're going to do this together, and we're going to start over and give these kids a chance instead of setting them up for failure.
Thank you. And candidate Marvin.
I loved being a teacher in Rochester. I've never been a morning teacher, so when that alarm went off at 6:00 every morning, I was cranky. Coffee helped. But by the time I got to school in a building with 1,000 or more students and staff, I always felt good about being there. Working with kids, especially working with a lot of kids, all day, every day, it's hard. It takes every ounce of training and knowledge and creativity and patience and energy that you have, every day. Those of you who are parents understand that and can imagine that instead of two or three kids at a time, you have 20 or 30. Teaching is also, and I'm clearly biased here, the best job in the universe, because every day, you get to witness your students, not all of them at once, but some of them, every day, experience the joy that comes with mastering a new skill, or being challenged with a new idea, or discovering an ability they didn't know they had. I'm so grateful I got to be part of that for so many years, and to witness so many of those joyful moments. My fear now is that nationwide, there is a movement involving some angry adults who don't have the facts right, who are using our schools as a battleground for their political agenda that has nothing to do with ensuring children have the opportunity to experience that joy. Our kids, all of them, deserve better. I'm ready to continue working hard every day to provide Rochester's public school students, all of them, with the best education any district can provide. I believe we can do that, and we will. Thank you to Rochester's public schools teachers and to Rochester's educational support professionals for your commitment to our students and for honoring me with your endorsement. I thank you, all of you, for your time this evening.
Thank you. And we have a rebuttal.
The kids do deserve better. Academic scores do not lie. The scores are down. It's public knowledge. Go to Minnesota Department of Education. The scores are dropping. They've been dropping for years. This is nothing new, so absolutely, kids deserve better. That's what we're trying to do. I'm not going to pretend and live in this, whatever land this is. I'm not giving you my opinion. I'm giving you facts.
Thank you. And a rebuttal.
What's the plan? What's the plan? Don't have symbols on the walls? Don't teach kids about how to get along with each other? Raise academic scores? We have a plan. It's a good one. It is endorsed by this community. Every single school has a plan. It's called a school continuous improvement plan. We have a plan. You don't make things get better by just continuing to repeat how bad they are.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the candidates for participating in tonight's forum and for participating in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to remind you all that the views expressed in the forum tonight were those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters Rochester or either of our, or any of our partners or sponsors. Thank you to our partners, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Post Bulletin, and the Rochester Public Library. Remember that Election Day is November 8th. Early voting has begun. If something you learned tonight changes your opinion, or in any of our other forums about the way you voted already, you can go to minnesotavotes.org, which is M-N-V-O-T-E-S.org, for information on how to change that. If you have a question about your polling place, I think you've had cards on your chairs for vote411.org, and that will help you walk through your entire ballot before Election Day. Remember, if you want to see this forum again, access to these forums are on the League of Women Voters website or the Rochester Public Library website. Good night, everybody. I'm going to ask you to leave as quickly as possible, since the library is now closed.